This meeting is now being recorded. We're, tonight we are suffering a little audio difficulties. Um, the speakers in the rooms, the amplifier for that um, smoked this afternoon. I don't know if it's the heat or if it was um, just its position, but it uh, so we're, we're gonna have to pass this mic around. There's a mic at the podium, the people we have here, but also counselors, we also need to speak into our individual mics. So that Zoom recordings and sixteen twenty-three can get our um, can get us to record at the prosperity. All right, I'm gonna open this meeting of the Gloucester City Council. And this meeting of the Gloucester City Council is recorded on Zoom, a link that is posted on the agenda. Okay. Mute, please, otherwise we'll get feedback. If you are calling on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or a device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications and public hearings to be recognized to speak. If technical difficulties arise and the Zoom link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting of the city council and a forum as president, the meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish the link. The minute shall note the interruption. It is the finding of the city of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity, or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation.
I'm gonna turn out for the date.
I forgot to announce, this is the June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, meeting of the Gloucester City Council. This is who we have.
Yeah.
And I'd like to recognize um, the city counselors that are here. We'll start with Board One Counselor Scott Memart, Counselor at Large Jeff Worthley, Board Three Counselor Marty Grace, Counselor at Large Jason Bro, Board Two Counselor Dylan Benson, Counselor at Large Valerie Gilman, and Board Four Counselor Frank Maschota, and I am Tony Rose, the council president, uh, Counselor at Large. We also have in attendance remotely is Danielle Argatino, our Assistant City Clerk, and Kenny Costa, our City Auditor, and Jill Cahill. With us in the auditorium is our DQW Director Mike Hale, our CFO Connor McCorkle, McCorkle, um, Dana Martin, our City Engineer, our Mayor Greg Verga, and I believe, who else is over there? Our Legal Suzanne Egan. And that's it for city um, city personnel. And our City Clerk Grace Paulier. You're gonna need to remind us repeatedly about this.
I'm here too, Joey.
Speaking to two microphones. Okay, um.
Did you mention Sean?
Oh, and Sean Nolan is, um, Counselor Nolan is joining us by Zoom. All votes will be by roll call. And now we will have a flag salute led by Counselor Memart. Flag salute led by Counselor Memart.
(Inaudible) One nation, under God, indivisible, et naturis.
We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you, because it was a general hall and a soundstage at the empires in today's borough. Do you want to speak with that multiple? Yes. We now have oral communications. Oral communications, the public shall have the opportunity in every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow the resident and/or property owner and/or business owner who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the city's business to appear before the city council. Make their statement without debate. The city council will refer matters to the office of the mayor. Person speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each, and Counselor Memart will be the timekeeper. We will start with people in the auditorium who would like to speak under oral communication, step up to the podium, state your name and your address.
My name is Slip, that was all. I'm in the property of fifty-three Fort Square. And we had to talk about the tickets and the problems that we had at Fort Square. We do need some sign, I've walked on with a partner, a war council, Mr. Benson, and it uh, would come up with a proper solution, hoping it would ease the parking problems in there. Uh, one was to get some resident parking sign. But uh, in fifty, between fifty-one, fifty-five, Fort Square, we could have some residents sign that they'll, these are, I was told by a ticket ready that they couldn't park in. Uh, what reason, I don't know, but I know that uh, that that'd ease up some partners. The city of Gloucester holds some property at the bottom of that, across the street from Neptune House, that is uh, between eight and ten space. If there was parking only facility for residents, I think that would ease up some of the parking problems with that. I don't know what the best solution is, but that's one solution we think that we can do. We can get some signs that says that it's not the home, we think it'll help out. That's about all I can say, hoping that Mr. Benson, you go for silent, etc., wish. Thank you.
Hello, I read from terror, twenty-eight fourth square. And I wanted to just that we have resident parking only for the residents of Fort Square. And I also would add to that, from each floor, all the way up to the subway around the floor. They, all these houses were built in eighteen fifty, there are no driveways or no garage. It is impossible to park there, or for seventeen, it's the last two days, or today, on motorway. Can somebody, anybody asking for the sticker or a ticket or sticker for beach parking or resident parking on motorway without any cash or free paper, that's not accepted? Anybody in for that, it's never known, I'm little, I'm having to have a sticker on motorway. Anybody know? Um, this is harassment, this is unacceptable, we need to have parking in front of our house. My husband's law, Beach District, it is where I live, it's eleven, and the city said Beach District. Excuse me, but I don't understand, and you doing, travel, please, drive around and around all day at altitude to take a car to the park that that would be. We have, especially this time here, you've got the piazza, everybody's parked up down there, trying to see if there's been more than what's going on. But the people that live there, trying to get home. There's something to be, be done, like the resident parking only for those areas that ever, is what should be done. They did.
Repeat some of those, those points. We need resident parking only stickers down in Fort Square. Uh, this isn't completely, those houses were built many years ago, along the garages, so we need to find those. Uh, we did whole mopeds that, that actually took tickets, parked in two of our offices. Now, helping we made access on the property for seventy years, seven decades. And mopeds registered in our property, twenty-eight, on tickets. Now, this has never happened before, so something has changed here. And I'd love to know who gave the order for things to change, that these, that these tickets go past. I don't know only for uh, quote on RV, it's not only RV, it's everybody in the neighborhood, so something has changed. I'd like to know exactly what has changed. Now furthermore, our homies and views, whom you heard about, are very limited parking. Uh, we're taking apparently the police to, to afford our homes. So that's a couple hundred dollars, I'd like to know who's willing to pay for that. And uh, the situation is that bad, but it's, it's something that's got to be done here. Because we're, we're all fat swear, they're married, I think we take pretty good care, and we watch, like, Angel, right? And you can't have just any kind of beach sticker jumping in front of our house, parking, taking our parking, we love our teens, so. It's, you know, certain, it's a lot.
You would like to speak on any matter that's not on the agenda?
Not the only subject, is this on?
Yes, just speaker, speak right into it.
Count of thirty-two chapel suit, in this Gloucester. I have been trying to find all the information related to the MBTA zoning obligations. And I can get to the law in a few of the newer regulations that ring along. But I'm wondering if someone in the city might mail me, email me, where all of the information that we're working with on these zoning regulations, such as what properties can't be used, you know, whether churches are used, and public property is used, etc. Uh, and um, everything that applies and is applicable as we move forward on this obligation given to us by the state. If that's possible, I would be commended about, we probably might, but I, I can't find that total of the information online in the city site. I can't, I admit, I'm not good at them, but I would at least like to know where we are. Thank you.
Hi, I'm here at the bar, ten fourth square. Just have a few observations, I'd like to say, um, my steering cameras are noticing a lot of long-term parking down at Fort Ross. So early morning, looks like they ain't. Work uniforms on, and they're there past the block, block, long-term parking down, one observation. The other observation I'm seeing is, I've been speaking with the other people down at Fort, or these people who are parking down at Fort, let's say someone doesn't have a beach sticker, and we might say, oh, you gotta have a beach sticker. And over the last two years, maybe three years, I've seen a level of aggression. You know, like, well, we've been here so long, just so you stay, like, the center of the pile, we'll do something. And try, so every two observations I'm seeing with my team, so this, long-term parking with level of aggression, with the pushing acts. Just speaking.
My name is Seh Popo, I live at one thirty-nine Main Street. And um, parking seems to be, I'm sure even in the city of Gloucester, period, not among the courts, any parking lots, um, in the downtown area. I've been talking about this, probably the last few years. We were, uh, doing meetings with um, Karen Mer and um, Jill Cahill for months. Um, we were supposed to receive opera money, which actually we did receive opera money, I think in the two, uh, twenty-three million dollars. I've asked the mayor a few times, what do you allocate those funds for? Since those funds were supposed to be to rejuvenate the downtown area. And most of the businesses and residents in that area have parking issues. That was number one. And Sua Conestap, we would work on these issues. I know ten million dollars went to the sewer treatment plant, I'd love to know, do any of the thirteen million dollars win? I've asked for additional parking, parking garage um, being built. Um, they say it's expensive, we have the funds to do that. Federal government gave us that during the code of relief, um, grants that they provided to many cities and towns. I also have a business on Main Street. Um, the parking meters are a good issue, lots of customers getting ticketed. Apparently there's a delay um, with the parking meters, so a lot of customers getting ticketed, even though they have proof, money on the meter, they've been on the app and use the app correctly. There's a lot going on, um, businesses are losing uh, money in the downtown area, people are getting frustrated over it, and nobody seems to do anything about it. The meter meters are frustrated within, the customers out, and the business owners out. Uh, I would like to know from the city council, or the mayor, or whoever knows the answer to it, where's that money, that additional thirteen million dollars, getting out of the way to? Everybody here is talking about parking, that it is a big issue in the city of Gloucester. This needs to be resolved, and some of these funds need to be allocated towards getting these issues um, protected. Thank you.
Anyone else in the auditorium who would like to speak under oral communications? No, now we have no hands raised, I'm going to move to the next order of business, Madam Clerk.
We have a presentation by Marty Fior regarding Gloucester Salt.
All right, if you could introduce yourselves and your associates.
Hi everyone, thank you so much for allowing us to speak today. I'm really excited for a bit more of those who look around the circle. My name's Marty Fior, um, I'm a food doctoral research scientist at the Berkeley Research Institute, I'm from Florida. But I live here in Gloucester, my family, and I have a former major in Gloucester. We tried to form a Gloucester Salt, sort of during the COVID, when we were thinking a lot about food security issues for animal food access. And it was that moment that sort of drove us to think a little bit more about what we could do. What we could do to sort of promote residents community, residents city loss. And so we started a small nonprofit, uh, we're a group of farmers, fishermen, scientists, educators, and hearing members who are passionate about increasing understanding of how food is harvested, not only from the land, but also from the system. And so our mission is to create increased access, more education, and support professional programs related to food eating. And we think about this as a more holistic system, right? So not just the food that's earned from land, and also all those people who have an execution through the ocean. And so I wanted to start by showing you guys, Matt, you've all seen, this is an article chart of Gloucester, if we can. And I think one of the things that this sort of symbolizes for me is, right, this is an article chart, you get very little information about the land, you get a lot of information about the city. You can imagine the same happen, you get tons of information about the land, and no information about us. And as, as a group, what we're trying to do is think about the land to see it much more connected. And we think about the food systems that are coming from these, it's not going to go in. And so what we're trying to do is connect self-hidary harvesting, aquaport reparations, wild harvest of finfish, with the actual land-based animal harvest. And so these are her ideological, ideological connections, we're also really um, Gloucester connections. So this picture is Captain Joe gunning fish at sea, or killing fish at sea. Those fish will go into a fossil, they will be played, those plants will then go back into natural targets, because that'll allow our performance to be good. And that will result in fish burn, whatever, and toxic residues. So there's really little connections between one and the city, and there's also all the, I can develop access to all of those markets. And so the other thing that we'd see a lot of, but similar in both these industries, is a consistent avenue of farmer or fish. And so what we're trying to do is promote better execution, better access, go closer by, enter these industries, uh, at the beginning of this. So I think one of the factors you have to have in the group is that we have really unique and diverse experiences. Uh, so we have folks who are involved in oyster harvesting, oyster ground, uh, we have educators, we have folks that are in the, the wild harvest. Joe's in Blueboat, which is fishing the bathroom, David Safari, Lobster. Uh, we also have folks on the science side, friends like myself, Danny Bab, who's a, who gets to see them. Uh, I'm out with my friend over to Tucker, and he's talking a little bit more about some of what they're doing.
All right, so we've been hosting a plethora of different community courses that are free to the public, to attend, they're all just some nations, they.
I'm sure you hold the mic up.
Uh, we've been hosting a number of different community courses that are free to the public, uh, to attend. Um, we've been mainly hosting over at the farm on Concord Street, Cedar Park Gardens. Um, some of the courses that have been offering, uh, as you can see up here, there's some farm species that you can grow, keep in. Um, and we've been diving into that, um, so that people know about the local harvest, what you can grow here on K B as well. We've also been coordinating with uh, schools to promote field trips as well. Field trips have been coming to the farm, and you're gonna connect in with the farm, you know, with, with um, business and to promise. Here's the work we had last Thursday at the farm, where I'm talking about how to tell us amigos in the greenhouse, and ways that we can tell us seniors. The king, uh, Joe here, and they are preparing red fish, uh, that you would do at home, if you're gonna cook them whole. Uh, you can see in this picture, preparing flour, or, on this particular day, we went through uh, six different species of fish that have landed in Gloucester for local residents, um, that they could prepare at home. This is the field trip that we hosted at the farm, where we're teaching kids how to seed, we're teaching them how to plant, and we're teaching them how to harvest. In the uh, greenhouse, we set this up in March, and as you can see, we are standing in the greenhouse right before we're working to fill it in. And that is, we're teaching the kids how to play different fish and uh, filter. Some of the things that we're working on right now are the youth program. We are all specialists in the field, so we're teaching mainly from the commercial end of production. Uh, I'm a full-time farmer, we have full-time fishermen, you know, full-time scientists, uh, full-time oyster farmer as well. Yeah, so what we're doing, and we're giving a unique perspective of how to do this commercially, but also telling you to be proud of how to do it at home. So we can, before your day, just after your support, really uh, what we're working on. And I hope everybody in the audience um, would come out to our courses, they're totally free, they happen on square Thursday of the month, for free.
Um, how would um, the public find out where to, how they access what the courses, when the courses are happening, where they're happening?
Yeah, so it all goes through the rest, the Gloucester Salt platform. And we can try to share that, we share it via social media also, but that's where the course gets over, our courses, you know, that information.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you so much for the presentation.
Counselor Nolan has a hand raised.
Counselor Nolan, did you have some questions?
Um, sorry Bart, it's very hard to hear what's going on in the auditorium tonight.
You may have to commit.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Excellent, Bart, great presentation, it's very hard to hear in the auditorium tonight, uh, with the difficulties. I believe in salt, and I'm happy to hear what you had to say, um, and what you're looking to do. And I support you a hundred percent, and I think the organization that you work with, trying on the grassroots level to educate children, and also the adults on sustainability, and working with fishes that we have, and growing our own vegetables, and a lot of other things that you guys are doing, and I just want to thank you very much from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you so much, Tom, for your support.
I have one quick question.
Counselor Gro has a question.
Thank you for the presentation, um, is there gonna be any effort, maybe, I don't know if this may, may not run with, with your mission, but to reintegrate a combination of fish and farmer's market, we seem to have struggled having those in the name, in, in the community, but to me, it seems like a no-brainer that we should be having this on a regular basis, or having oysters and, and all sorts of fish, and farmers coming in would, would be a great asset, I think, to the community.
Yeah, so there was just the first farmer's market last week, that was at Cedar Gardens, and I think that there is a lot of um, complications in farmer's markets, a lot of distributed fish, and shellfish in particular, have to do with that, I wish. And so we would be interested in trying to pursue that in the future, but it takes a little bit of a bigger organization to, to get there, and to meet all of us.
And the farmer's market is every Wednesday from two-thirty to six-thirty at Burnham's Field.
Thank you very much. You came on a good night, you had a nice audience.
It was a nice, dear question. But I don't, it's the, the microphone. This we have these two, yeah. Um, no, I just want to say a shout out, um, you were at the farmer's market, thank you for that. Uh, thank you to the administration also for making that happen at Burnham's Field, it's a success tomorrow night as well, at Burnham's Field. We look forward to that, and I hope everyone in the audience and across the community comes to the farmer's market. It was fantastic, it was hot, but it, it was great, so thank you again. And thank you for this wonderful presentation, to try to continue to help our fishing industry, and also bringing in the land part of it. So I think it's, as you, you could say, uh, definitely great, so thank you so much. Surf and turf, that's what I wanted to say.
Madam, for all my sort of business.
Confirmation of new appointments.
Counselor Nolan, you're up. Just muted.
He's muted.
How's that?
It's good.
All right, good. So first up, we have Chief Financial Officer Connor McCorkle, fulfilling an unexpired term, term to end two fourteen twenty-six. Um, I would like to ask if the administration would like to say something before Connor comes up and speaks?
Could you announce this? Um, so Connor McCorkle has been with the city for about a year and a half, the way that we're, and uh, he served under um, as the Assistant CFO of John, uh, John, who unfortunately passed away earlier in the spring. And uh, Connor has been filling in as the interim CFO, the acting CFO, uh, since that time. And um we are delighted and looking forward full time to be the CFO of King John's County. Connor brings up a superstratting, he brings up his first topic, which uh we all have listened to over the past several weeks, and um I, I have nothing bad to say about the guy. The guy's first of all, very funny, which is kind of relevant to his job. He's very helpful in terms of his business down day to day, having a good sense of humor. But uh he's got a background in private sector, which comes a new outlook to municipal government. And he's a fast learner, he's really done a great job. So with that, I'd like to bring him up to tell a little bit about himself, and I don't think he'll support this conversation.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Mayor. How you doing tonight, Connor? We just want to tell the council a little bit about yourself and answer some questions, that'd be excellent.
So, um Connor McCorkle, I've gotten to be working with a lot of real life sons, um who's been the interim CFO of the role. Really looking forward to continue uh working in the treasure collector's office and building a monitor, start foundation out of there. Uh I think there's a lot of things that are modernized and be a little bit more analytical in our approach to things. And I look forward to pushing that work over, opening a sooner than one. But I think we have, at least some of the issued budget process, a couple of tough budget views and hurdles. I think we need to be more analytical and more modern first to be able to work that, that soon.
Excellent. Is there any uh councillor questions?
Uh thank you. Uh thank you Connor for stepping up, and I just want to give a shout out. Hello, Sanlam State graduate. It's great to have the resume and the experience to do it. My one question is, have we thought of maybe going forward, looking at how other communities put their budgets together and putting using like software and where uh if that could be maybe something in the future where people that's three months, like it works pretty effectively in other communities, um is running on the public possibly?
Yes, we're looking at um my first name, interim CFO for going to go overcome it. Uh and she uses her, she uses a program that she gave a lot for uh using. Uh it can be more beneficial, so we're not even know the binders in here. Uh unfortunately, almost save some at us, so the dislike of cycle to do it, but it's something I definitely want to, a future project is.
No, I appreciate that, and again, thank you, and you'll have my full support.
Connor, thank you so much. Um I have a question, which is kind of a heartfelt question, but I'd love to just hear from you very succinctly, um what you learned from John Dunn, who is really important to us and our city? What was the most important thing you learned from John Dunn?
I think everyone can probably say about John Dunn, he always set his school, um even if things drive a little bit back then. Uh and I think that's something that stretches during his budget, so you know, I could try to evolve a little bit. Uh if he was able to sort of sort of things and move on, I think that's important in a role like this.
Thank you.
Anyone throw it?
Other councillors?
Other councillors, is what I said.
Thank you, Connor. Uh as Chair of Budget and Finance, uh we're closely with John Dunn over the last eight or nine years, and we welcomed you into the fold, and uh your tutelage under John has been helpful, I think, and we're really looking forward to your fresh perspectives and energy in the federal collector's office and as Chief Financial Officer of the city cluster. We have great confidence in you. Thank you.
Thank you Connor for your hard work already, and look forward to Can you hear me now? Is that better? Okay, thank you Connor for your hard work so far. Um I think that you've really amalgamated a lot of the information you could get from John and the time you were with him. I want to encourage you to also forge your own path. Um and I think one of the challenges um in any of these kind of positions is you have a responsibility, you report to the mayor, you give reporting information to the council, you can work with the auditor, but you also work for the public. And I think it's a perfect time, especially with the local people, to remind ourselves all the time that these are people who pay our bills, and we need to keep doing the best we can to make sure every penny is accounted for. You're doing a great job, just do good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Connor, I appreciate you, all that you do for the city. Um I did not have pleasure of working with John Dunn, but I certainly have pleasure of working with you, and I am so very, very grateful for that. Um all the time and effort that you put into this, that this budget that we just passed last week. Um you deserve an absolute ovation for all of the hard work, so thank you. Thank you.
I'm voting for you.
Uh Connor, you've um you had to, you were thrown into the deep end, and you had to unwind um much of what um our friend John had inside his head. You had to try to find it in the maze of paperwork that was left behind, and I congratulate you on doing that, and that hard work and be able to pull together. And I look forward to seeing your budget next year, because I think it's going to look a whole lot different. Thank you.
Uh Councilor Nolan, did you want to make the motion, or did you make a motion?
Nope, I can make a motion right now. On a motion by Council Grace, seconded by Council Worthley, the ordinance administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint Connor McCorkle fulfilling an unexpired term as Chief Financial Officer, term to end 21426, and I so move.
Second.
I know, so go ahead. That was going to announce who made the motion.
Motion made by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Council Grace. And all the roles.
Please, Madam Clerk, this is going to get a little tricky with the microphone, it's going to be uh interesting there.
Can we just yell really loud?
Yeah, I guess we'll do this um if we do it into our Zoom microphone. Um then the audience out there will hear us, and if we speak loud enough, we won't need the microphone.
All roll.
Councilor Memhard?
Aye.
Councilor Benson?
Aye.
Councilor Gilman?
Aye.
Councilor Grace?
Aye.
Councilor Gross?
Aye.
Councilor Grow?
Aye.
Councilor Majota?
Yes.
Councilor Nolan?
Aye.
Councilor Worthley?
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
Good luck.
Next motion, Councilor Nolan, or next appointment?
Uh we have Board and Commissioners of Trust Funds, uh John Byrne Bornhoff, uh fulfilling an unexpired term. John, how you doing tonight?
Yep, he's on, he's on Zoom.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you, John. Just want to tell a little bit about yourself for the rest of the councils when we vote.
Yeah, it's um I, my name is John. Uh in Gloucester, it's always been Jock Bornf. Not to be confused with Bornhaft. Uh I live at 29 Nashua Avenue, uh where Tony Gross and others, Councilor Gross and I, others led the road paving committee. Um I've lived in Gloucester, um a large fraction of my life. Um as a youngster, I grew up here. I went to St. Mel's, which doesn't exist anymore. I went to Central Grammar across the street, doesn't exist anymore. I went to St. Peter's High School, which doesn't exist anymore. And I finally went out to South Bend, Indiana. But I um have spent uh my youth here, uh lived in Jamaica Plain, uh a large fraction of my life, but always had a house here, uh and came back here uh for summers and other times during the year. Uh this place has meant the world to me, uh to my wife, Vicky, uh my two sons, Sam and Peter, uh who to this day make every effort to keep coming back here. I, I now, since about 2016, we had a house fire here on Nashua Avenue, and um we rebuilt our house and have lived here virtually full-time since 2016. Um a couple of years back, had the honor of serving at the mayor's request on the private road working group with Councilor Gilman, uh as well as Susan Egan and others. Um that was an honor. Um I could go on and on, and I won't. Uh it's an honor to be uh recommended for this committee on trusts. Um I've had a professional career in aviation. I worked for GE Aviation for a number of years, Pratt &amp; Winnie before that, Wyman Gordon. Um I've run businesses, uh uh every aspect of a business, and it would be, I, I would love to get back to the city in this capacity, um whatever the level of activity is going to be.
Excellent, thank you very much, John. Is there any council questions for John?
We apologize. We apologize for the sound. We're, we're trying to do the best we can um on this. So unless it's a real, no comment.
No, it's a question.
Okay.
Um and I know this is a challenge. My one question is, um what is one thing you would like to achieve as a commissioner of trust funds?
Um well, it, it, it starts with certainly understanding the goals and objectives of this committee and this commission. Um understanding the uh the, the monies that we're talking about, the sources of those monies. Uh but I would love to see uh the, the city grow in a, in a way that's valuable for all residents uh as a result of, of decision-making, and I, I think this is, it's a small group, obviously. Um I was honored to get suggested and recommended by Karen Bell, and so working with Karen Bell uh and the team uh to make a decision or decisions about the expenditures of funds that is going to mean the most for all residents of the city of Gloucester. Um my guess is we're talking small sums of money. Uh so putting that to meaningful use uh for years and years and years to come.
Thank you, John. Is there any other councils that have, may have any questions?
Was that, was that better for everyone to hear slightly? Okay, a little bit? Okay, we're working on that.
Okay. Fine, just do all the motions.
Councilor Nolan, we're ready for the motion.
Under motion of Council Worthley, seconded by Council Grace, the ordinance administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint John Bornf fulfilling an unexpired term to the Board of Commissioners of Trust Funds, term to end 21525, and I so move.
Second. It's been moved by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Councilor Grace. Roll call vote.
Discussing the motion. Discussing the motion.
I need to ask for Paul.
Sorry, I'm trying, sorry. I messed that part up. But I think the speaker's on the bottom.
Thank you. Firstly, thank you, John, for volunteering for this board. If I could spend maybe 30 seconds just explaining to the audience in case people are wondering, um the mayor is authorized to appoint three members to serve on a commission, on the board of commission of trust funds. These are funds that are donated to the city by different organizations that we create for our debt, and there's a responsibility to spend them as they were designed and also to manage them. At the end of the day, it's still the, this city treasurer's responsibility to implement the recommendations of these, this commission. And what we are doing tonight is confirming the appointment, mayor's report of John, um sorry, Ernat Bornf. Ernat is the next up choice, so I'll have my support. Thank you.
Yeah, host options. You have a call?
No, I thought it was time. I'd like to just reaffirm that um John Bornhoff is
Bornf.
Born, Bornf, sorry. Um I've known him for, since he's been here in Gloucester, um through his fire, um through the work on the private road repair. He is not only articulate, but he's hardworking and he's fun to work with. So um just a total package, so I'll be supporting this. Thank you.
Councilor Memhard?
Aye.
Councilor Benson?
Aye.
Councilor Gilman?
Aye.
Councilor Grace?
Aye.
Councilor Gross?
Aye.
Councilor Grow?
Aye.
Councilor Majota?
Aye.
Councilor Nolan?
Aye.
Councilor Worthley?
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes. Councilor Nolan?
Yes. Next, we have Board of uh Commissions of the Trust Funds again for Frederica Dorringer, um fulfilling an unexpired term, term to end 21525. I don't see her on the list. Um uh Frederica, are you available?
Come on down.
How you doing tonight, Frederica? If you just tell the council a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, yes.
That microphone does not work at all. President Grow. President Grow, can you hear me?
Can't hear you, Sean.
The microphone does not work at all on that station. I heard nothing.
She's fun to work with.
I, I've heard she's very, very, very great, so. But we do have larger presentations and that mic does not work.
Worthley?
Yeah.
Fair microphone?
Yep.
Okay, yeah. Just one for, yeah, move that one to the desk and everybody comes to the desk instead of the D S. And when you want a Radio Shack.
We're not going to ask you to repeat all that.
Yeah. It's not, it's not. You want, you want to do a few tests into that?
You want to do a few tests into that speaker, into that microphone? Sean, can you hear?
Nothing.
Okay, thanks.
So, can you hear me now?
Absolutely, loud and clear.
Good. Do you have a question or?
I have no questions. Does anybody else in the council have any questions?
Hold on a second, Sean, we're doing a little AV stuff. Have to speak into both microphones now. And this is gonna-
And also speaking into both microphones makes it really difficult with the feedback.
So, any questions?
No.
Want to make the motion, Councilor Nolan, we're just going to have to project our voices and use the Zoom microphones and ask the presenters to all speak loud enough for the audience in the room to hear us.
On a motion by Councilor Grace, seconded by Councilor Worthley, the Ordinance and Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council appoint Frederica Dorringer, fulfill an unexpired term to the Boards of Commissioners of Trust Funds, term to end 21525, and I so move.
Second.
So, motion's been made by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Councilor Grace. Discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilor Memhard.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Row.
Aye.
Majota.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We want the microphone back. All right, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda.
Would any councils like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Councilor Gro.
I'd like to remove City Council Order 2024-015.
Anyone else? I would like to remove the special city council meeting minutes from June 18th. Anyone else? Vote on the consent agenda.
I'd like to move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Gilman, seconded by Councilor Memhard. Discussion? All those in favor?
Call the-
Oh, sorry. Call the roll, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Memhard.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gro.
Aye.
Majota.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion to accept the consent agenda as amended passes.
Councilor Gro.
I'm just pulled it off to remind councillors and all that we would like to get maps on all these parking requests so that we have them from outset. I think we had one at one point, but I didn't see it in the packet.
Thank you. And do we need to vote these separately? I'll entertain a motion, Councilor Gro.
I move to accept the- Whatever he said.
Send to ONA, the Ordinance Administration Committee and the Traffic Commission, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Worthley, seconded by Councilor Memhard. Please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Memhard.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gro.
Aye.
Majota.
Aye.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
And-
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote to refer the council order to ONA and Traffic Commission passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
And I remove that because I misspoke at that meeting and it's reflected in the minutes and I would just like to put it on record that Essex and Rockport, I said that they had a rate, but they do not, they actually have meters on their sewer, so they are rate payers just like every other citizens of Gloucester. So I'd like to put back on the approval of the special city council meeting minutes of 6182024, and I so move.
Second.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilor Memhard.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gro.
Aye.
Majota.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote to accept the minutes passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
And do we have a unanimous consent calendar, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, we have a memorandum from the CFO regarding the FY 2024 year-end budget transfer. And we- To be referred to BNF at a special BNF meeting on July 9th. So move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Gro, seconded by Councilor Gilman. Any discussion? Just to note, that's at 5:30 here. 5:30 in this auditorium. Council Worthley.
Yes, thank you. Obviously, I'm going to vote to refer this to the Budget and Finance Committee, but I'd like to ask the administration and the Treasurer's Office to supply us with the transfers well within 48 hours of the meeting because that would make it compliant with open meeting laws. I think to just send a cover letter without the actual transfers, the recommended transfers puts us in jeopardy of violating open meeting laws. So just if we can have that presented before end of day Friday, I think that would make- I'll refer to our city clerk.
July 9th is the meeting.
Right, so end of day Friday.
A week.
A week from Friday, right, so 48 hours before the meeting. Thank you.
Usually get a BNF packet well before that.
Right, but we're referring something without the data, so we'll need that to be part of the-
Thank you.
Agenda. Thank you.
Okay, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
We need to vote on-
Oh, we need to vote on the unanimous consent calendar. I'm just trying, sorry folks, I'm trying to move it along.
Councilor Memhard.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gro.
Majota.
Sorry.
Aye.
Nolan.
I jumped again.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
June 20th, 2024, Budget and Finance Standing Committee report.
Councilor Memhard. Thank you. We met on Thursday in the Harbor Masters Office for Budget and Finance, and I thank Councilor Gilman for standing in for Councilor Worthley, who had some other business that kept him from getting to the meeting, although he did participate remotely. The first item at Budget and Finance on June 20th was a memorandum from the interim Community Development Director requesting our acceptance of the Essex National Heritage Visitor Center grant in the amount of $2,500. I'll read the motion, which by myself, motion by myself, seconded by Councilor Gilman, Budget and Finance Standing Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept under Mass General Law 4453A, a federal grant from the National Park Service passed through the Essex National Heritage Commission, a 2024 Essex Heritage Visitor Center grant for a total of $2,500, and this is for the purpose of supporting activities of the city's visitor welcome center at Stagefort Park. The grant period is from July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2025. There is no local match for this grant, and I so move. Second. Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Discussion? Want to give us any narrative on this? This is an annual grant that we use to support the visitor center activities and the administration is pleased to have that available to us. Madam Clerk, would you like to call the roll, please?
Councilor Memhard.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gro.
Aye.
Majota.
Aye.
Nolan. Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
The second matter from Budget and Finance Committee is a memorandum from our Fire Chief, Eric Smith, requesting acceptance of a donation valued at the amount of $22,000. And I'll read the motion, which was by myself, seconded by Councilor Gilman. Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept under Mass General Law 4453A and one half, a gift of tangible goods to the city of Gloucester Fire Department from Atlantic Fish and Seafood for a donation of equipment to update the entire fires, fire department's fleet metering ability for numerous gases. The equipment has a value in the amount of $21,752.83, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Gilman. I would just, by way of background, explain that Atlantic Fish and Seafood is making this donation to the city's fire department as a result of a negotiation settlement with OSHA in regards to a penalty for various citations that were issued, and OSHA negotiates a solution that strengthens our fire department as part of their penalty. Any more discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilor Memhard.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gro.
Aye.
Majota.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
The third item from last Thursday's Budget and Finance Committee meeting before us tonight is a memorandum from our CFO and a 2024 Supplemental Appropriation Number 24 in the amount of $320,000. I'll read the motion and we can have a discussion. Motion by myself, seconded by Councilor Gilman, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve Supplemental Appropriation 2024 SA 24 in the amount of $320,000 from the Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund, Undesignated Fund Balance, account number as noted, to the Building Maintenance Stabilization Fund DPW Building Improvements, account number is noted, and this is for the purpose of matching funds for the Department of Energy IAC Implementation Grant, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Gro. Discussion or some narrative? Would the administration want to weigh in on this?
I know Dana's here.
Right here, Connor. No, hang out with us up here. So this was a supplemental appropriation for a grant that was accepted at the prior BNF meeting. The grant had a cost match component, so this transfer allows us to have the funds needed to achieve that cost match. And you could speak to the project itself, but it's for solar panels.
Solar panels at the waste treatment plant in Westwood.
Oh, water.
Water.
Water. Believe it's water. Dana, water, right?
Water.
Good.
Filtration.
Any more discussion?
I have a que- I was just, when, once this is appropriated, how long will it take for the panels to be put up?
So I asked that question to Budget and Finance on the first round, if I could answer for the administration, if that's okay?
Okay, yeah, I mean-
So, this came to us about two or three weeks ago for our portion of it first, and I asked the question, and at that time, they didn't know, there's a process that they have to go through once the matching funds are there. I think it was Dana who said as soon as we have that project up and running, they'll let us know, but there wasn't an answer at that time. Dana, am I correct? Okay, we're going to run with that. Thank you.
Since the money, they can't put it out for bid proposal or anything until we approve these funds.
So there wasn't an answer yet.
Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Memhard.
Aye.
Benson.
Yes.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gro.
Aye.
Majota.
Yes.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Yes.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
And the fourth and final motion from Budget and Finance for your consideration tonight is a memorandum from the Director of Elder Services, Elise Nagre, requesting our acceptance of donations totaling $1,495. On a motion by myself, seconded by Councilor Gilman, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept various cash donations under Mass General Law, Chapter 4453A, to support the council on aging in the total amount of $1,495 from the following generous members and business partners within our community, who are Marie Doyle, Dolores Mack, Joseph Molnar, excuse me, Peter Tyrebox, Judith Denham, Jennifer Higgins, James Niles, Marilyn Grant, the Lanesville Community Center, Ronald Grover Jr., Thomas Shurmrah, Louise Ferazzi, Virginia Kroom, the Anisquam Association Inc., and Ann Rheinlander, for a total of $1,495, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Gro. Discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilor Memhard.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Gro.
Aye.
Majota.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
Councilor Memhard, would you like to speak about the $2 million that came from the library? Sure. We did, no action is required tonight, but the library, the Sawyer Free Library Board of Trustees President, Maren Sibley, wanted us to acknowledge our acceptance of $2 million that has been paid by the Sawyer Free Library Corporation Funds to the city of Gloucester, $2 million towards the funding of the new library. Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The June 17th, 2024 Ordinances and Administration Committee report.
There's no action required tonight for this as well. Special City Council Permit 2024-014, Benson Amen GCO, Chapter 22, Traffic in More Vehicles, Section 22-289, Parking Meter and- Section 22-289, Parking Meter and Parking Kiosk Zones on Streets by adding Pleasant Street on both sides from the intersection of Prospect Street to the intersection with Warren Street for a maximum time of four hours and a fee of 25 cents per half hour.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The June 17th, 2024 Special Planning and Development Standing Committee Meeting.
Just a very quick thing. We did a street closure for the Anisquam Seafare, which is going to be on July 27th, 2024. So that's a Saturday. Go and enjoy it. That's it.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public Hearing 2024, Number 17, Loan Order 2024, Number 1, Loan Authorization Request in the Amount of $205,972,280 for WPCF Secondary Treatment and Facility Upgrades.
I will open the public hearing.
Project, I shall project. Good evening, councilors again. I'm here, as you just heard, we're here to speak in favor of the loan order in the amount of $205,972,280. I'm joined tonight by our DPW Director, Mike Hale, our City Engineer, Dana Martin, our CFO, Connor McCorkle, and Suzanne Egan is behind you. She's right behind you. She's hiding over here. They're hiding in plain sight. Also, Eric Kelly from Environmental Partners and Bob Parsons from Tetra Tech. So I'm just going to give an overview, and they'll come up, the field I just mentioned, and sort of fill in some of the blanks. And one thing I'll note, that shortly you're going to be asking if anybody would like to come up and speak in favor of this loan order. I don't think anybody wants to. I don't want to be speaking in favor of a loan order of $200-plus million. But we're at a situation now, I'll just read off some names. We've got Alpa Silver, Squillis, Rafter, Toby, Bell, Kirk, and coming in the next few months, Safatia Romeo Taken. They've all been mayors during this discussion that has come up time and time again about the need for a secondary water treatment plant. If we go back in time, there were reasons why the city didn't attack this. Mayor Toby was dealing with extension of the sewers. Mayor Bell had to deal with the CSOs. Mayor Kirk had to deal with the oil water order and rebuilding the water plant.
I just want to check, Councilor Nolan, can you hear okay?
Mayor Verga is projecting.
Thank you.
And then lastly, Mayor Taken was dealing with COVID. We're under a consent decree from the federal government right now. You have a copy of it. I'm going to refer to it in a minute, and Suzanne will refer to it a little further in her remarks. We have got to do this. This is not a choice. It's something we should do. You go back to when the sewer plant went in place, it basically was the beginning of the end of fish processing here in the city. This is economic development, an opportunity for economic development that could supply that secondary treatment for our fish processing plants or the return of. We have a lot of manufacturing that use a lot of water. Some of the questions that were asked at the BNF Committee I'm going to try to address, if we miss anything out. Question came up about Rockport and Essex. We have IMAs, intermunicipal agreements with both towns. Both of the agreements clearly state that they are on the hook for a percentage to cover their, their cost of the debt service. There has been no determination on the rate, whether this, the payments will go on the rate or if it would be a debt shift. I'm going to read something from the decree in just a moment. We've been working since I took off, prior to me taking office, but at least two and a half years in office. I've been working very closely with Senators Marky Warren, Congressman, help me out Seth, Seth Moulton, as well as Senator Tar and Rep Ferrante. We've gotten over the past couple of years about $5.5 million in earmarks or congressionally directed spending through the partnership we have with our state and federal delegation. I'd like that cooperative spirit to continue as we continue to ask them for additional earmarks in the future. And we will be seeking out ways to pay this debt down. We will not be borrowing $206 million all at once. What we're going to talk about tonight is the SRF, the State Revolving Fund, which is where we are applying for the full amount. It was mentioned earlier, we put $10 million of ARPA funds into this already in addition to the roughly $5.5 million we've received from the federal and state delegation. The SRF is usually a 2% interest loan. Because of our demographics, we're looking at a 1.5% interest loan. So I would just urge you to consider this what's before you. We have the opportunity to finally put this to rest and get the secondary treatment in place that the federal government has been very nicely asking us to do. And now through an agreement, through the courts, we are at that point. A no vote does not end the requirement from the federal government to do this job. It's better to work with our partners at the state and federal level, as we have been, and find ways to get low-interest loans, more grants, and try to find a way to get this project, which we are required to have done by 2028. Question came up about, since we don't have a lot of the answers yet, how can we keep the public and the council informed? Page 13 of the consent decree, paragraph 18 says, and I'm just going to read this into the record. Reports on compliance. The city shall submit semi-annual reports to EPA and Mass DEP summarizing its compliance with the provisions of this consent decree. Progress reports shall be submitted on or before July 31st and January 31st of each year. Each progress report submitted pursuant to this paragraph shall, A, describe activities undertaken during the reporting period directed at achieving compliance with this consent decree; B, identifying all plans, reports, and other deliverables required by this consent decree that have been completed and submitted during the reporting, reporting period; C, describe the expected activities to be taken during the next reporting period in order to achieve compliance with this consent decree; and D, identify any anticipated or potential areas of noncompliance with this consent decree. So I read this as, unfortunately, we don't have answers yet. We have a deadline to get this in before the end of the fiscal year, so we qualify for the loan I just mentioned. But I am pledging to you that as we make these reports to the federal government and to the DEP and EPA, we will also forward them to the council, and they will be made public, publicly available. So with my overview done, I think I'd like to bring up Mike Hale to sort of talk about the process we've been going through, at least for the last couple of years, and where we've gotten so far with the design. And then we'll just bring up the others as required to tell the full story. So with your permission, Mr. President, hand it over to Mike Hale.
Please.
Good evening, councilors.
It's both, both microphones for Zoom.
Both of them.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. I'm here to speak in favor of the loan authorization for just under $206 million. About five years ago, I had an unexpected visitor in my office. It was the acting Regional Director from the EPA. They don't make house calls. They came to my office to let me know that the EPA, as well as the DEP, were inclined not to honor our 301H waiver, which we have enjoyed for the past 40 years. The 301H waiver is primary treatment without secondary. They would not issue our permit without it. We're required to have a permit from the federal government, as well as the state, for a discharge for a wastewater. Since that time, I worked with the last two administrations to develop a team, both an owner's project manager, which is required by law, as well as a design team, which we have onboard today. And we are going forward with the best design we have for the facility at Essex Avenue. This is certainly the largest loan order I have been before the council for, ever. I've been here numerous times. And certainly, I think the mayor indicated, it's not always easy to do the right thing. This is one of those things that is right for the City of Gloucester. I think you can go back in time. As a young boy, I have a picture of myself standing on the preloaded site of Essex Ave around 1978, '79. And soon after that, plant construction began, and we came online in the early 1980s, '84. Certainly, our fish process, processing industry took a massive hit when we had to implement individual pretreatment for our facilities that process our fish in the community. There's no guarantees that secondary is going to be the magic bullet to relieve some of these businesses of having industrial pretreatment ahead of discharging to our system, but certainly provide a somewhat of a buffer to them. Perhaps will encourage us to grow our local economy. And we have no choice. This is certain, that we are the last community of this size with primary treatment only anywhere in the United States. You may find some small package plants in some coastal communities, maybe Northern Maine, but this is it. We are a dinosaur when it comes to wastewater treatment. We have the most rudimentary form of wastewater treatment that the EPA and the DEP can no longer live with. We cannot meet our permit compliance with primary, primary treatment. And secondary is the only method to achieve the permit limits. I have our city engineer, Europium, and our lead designer with us here today. If there are technical questions after this, so feel free to ask.
Thank you.
If you'd like, it'd probably be good to bring up our consultants to talk about, and I don't know if you have the slides available from BNF the other day, but they could certainly talk about what they've been doing design-wise and things like that.
Sure, and then we can ask questions afterwards.
So you want them up? So Bob and Eric?
Hate to do it, but you guys are going to have to share the mic. And you have to speak, you have to speak into both of them. One goes out to the electronic audience and one's for the local audience.
Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Eric Kelly. I'm a principal with Environmental Partners. We're serving as the city's owner's project manager. We've been working with the city now for about two years on this project. One of the first efforts we undertook was doing an evaluation of the facility that was incorporated into a request for qualifications that led to the designer selection. Bob Parsons, who's a senior manager with Tetra Tech, is here. Tetra Tech is the city's design engineer on the project. We just have a few slides here just to provide a project summary. This is the same material generally that we shared at Budget and Finance on Thursday last week. So just as a little background that the mayor and Mike brought up first. The facility was constructed in the early 1980s as the city's primary treatment plant. It has been operating under a waiver since it was constructed with the Clean Water Act. The city entered in the consent decree in 2022. That put the requirement that secondary treatment, which is an advanced level of treatment to improve the effluent quality going out to Massachusetts Bay through the city's outfall, is to be completed by March of 2028 and then online and meeting permit by the end of June of '28. Sorry, that was March '28 and June '28. Preliminary design was recently completed and has been submitted to both the federal and state regulators for review. Just as a manner of background, there have been ongoing facility improvements that preceded this project. We helped the city with a new chemical feed building to address some vulnerabilities of the old facility. That was completed in 2021. We recently completed in December the flood resilience improvements, which is a series of things shown in the colored graphic over to the right. And there's a photo of some of the elements there. That was completed in December. That was to provide the facility with full flood protection up to the 2070 500-year floodplain. So essentially, protecting the future investment and also the existing operations. Similarly, in '23, we also invested in new influent pumps to replace the outdated and beyond repair screw pumps that were there and put them inside a weatherized shelter ahead of the 2023 winter season. Right now, the city is in the process of proceeding with some additional improvements at the grit system, which will be implemented later this year. As the mayor touched upon and others have, there was an initial $10 million in ARPA funds that was allocated to the city for wastewater system project needs, which includes some of the costs incurred to date for professional services related to the preliminary design. The city has also been awarded two grants administered by US EPA in the values of $2 million and $3 million. That initial $3 million grant is being finalized as we speak. That will be covering preliminary design services. So that gives us a total of approximately $15 million in both local and federal funding to date. Similarly, the city has proceeded with applying for a community one-stop grant, which was submitted in June of this year. That is for an initial request of $500,000, and there will be recurring annual requests moving forward. Similarly, we're looking into the submission of a FEMA grant. It's related to resilient infrastructure later this year, as well as we continue to turn over every opportunity that came out of the bipartisan infrastructure law. The funding authorization before the council tonight is in, is in relation to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, which is the state of Massachusetts' primary funding mechanism for both drinking water and wastewater and stormwater projects. The Clean Water State Revolving Fund is the recipient of additional proceeds from the federal infrastructure law. Roughly speaking, Massachusetts stands to receive about a billion extra dollars in funding. The total project funding we're seeking is $205,972,280. That application was submitted to the state in August of 2023 for eligibility for this program year of 2024. That funding will be allocated off across four total loans up to that value. Terms are negotiable between the city and the trust. There's upwards of a 30-year term. As mentioned before, we, the city is eligible for a 0.5% rate reduction to 1.5% due to its housing choice designation. Currently, there's a minimum of 3.3% of the project total principal will be forgiven. That is subject to new terms and conditions each year, depending on how the program has new conditions worked into it. Currently, we need this appropriation and authorization by June 30th in order to be, maintain our space on the 2024 Intended Use Plan. Following the council authorization, then we'll begin proceeding with the initial loan application paperwork, which is generally mostly administrative items and some technical information that gets submitted to the state. They then would coordinate with Connor's office in terms of establishing the loan. I think that covers all my slides.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else to speak in favor?
That's the end of our presentation, so if you want to.
Thank you.
Not telling you how to run your meeting, but we're done.
You're done, so.
We're ready for questions when it's done.
Yep. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Well, please do. Please state your name and address, please, sir.
My name is Bruce Tobe, T-O-B-E-Y, and I reside at 5 Michael's Lane in lovely Ward 1. I sit here tonight, not coming often to this building these days because it's other people's turns. By the way, can folks hear me? I'm using my outdoor voice. I feel very comfortable talking to you here tonight because it's as if it's 2002 and I'm still mayor because the sound system really stunk in those days you may recall. But I think I bring a couple of pieces of perspective from experience, some hard, but all valuable. Based on that experience, the first thing I want to do is salute Mayor Verga. He is not being brought before you under the punitive blows of federal and state enforcement to do what he's supposed to do. He's doing the right thing. He's seizing an opportunity to engage much-needed and very beneficial, valuable environmental remediation. My nine years as mayor, and I'm grateful for the citizens of Gloucester having given me that opportunity, were years of very, very busy environmental investment through capital borrowing. And much of it was. And much of it was driven, the landfill was its own oozing sewer. But the sewer system issues were driven by this self-same consent decree. Think of it as being a book with chapters. There was a chapter on the collection system and how it had to expand to areas where there wasn't a sewer system and be upgraded in areas where it was deficient. There was a chapter on combined sewer overflows and getting the plan in place to ultimately get separation and other remedial measures taken. And then there was the chapter on adding secondary treatment. And Mr. Hale is absolutely right. I've been working with EPA and other regulators through the course of my career in a variety of roles. And the fact of the matter is, this waiver, when first granted, I am told, was viewed as an anomaly, and it only became more anomalous with the passing of years as others fell by the wayside because the standard of the law was a standard technology could achieve. And there really were no good excuses. I can tell you this much, if you look at the collection system work we did in my nine years, take those split-up bond authorizations, but addressing a single chapter, just as this bond authorization will in one blow address a second, single chapter, update it for inflation, and guess what? We spent at least as much in real dollars today on expanding the sewer system into Ward 4 and parts of Ward 3 and upgrading it in Wards 1 and 2. And by the grace of the voters of the city, town of Essex, running a main up Essex Avenue, we got a lot done. We didn't always know how we were gonna pay for it, but I can tell you this much, we always knew by the end because myself as mayor, an abcom body who doesn't get the credit he deserves, as council president, worked as a team to find solutions. And they worked. And I heard at the time, it's gonna hurt, but people of good faith will get this job done and done fairly. In closing, I just wanted to note a couple of the reasons why I think it's important that the community fall in line behind this effort. There are just a couple. I was a city solicitor when the primary treatment plant came online. It was late in my tenure in 1984. These plants, I'm old, people. This plant, like any plant, is designed with certain capacity to remove specific pollutants.
I'm gonna have to wrap it up.
Of course. The fact of the matter is, the day the plant opened, every single fisheries cutting house in Gloucester, and a few frozen packers too, had to shut down forever. We lost a piece of our heritage. We will get that back with secondary treatment as well as other economic development opportunities. View this as an economic development investment. And that would be to my final point.
Thank you.
Who owns this asset? Every resident taxpayer and ratepayer in the city of Gloucester. And by making this investment, we don't hurt their interests.
We have to, we have to wrap it up.
Thank you for your preparedness.
Thank you.
Thank.
Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Do we have any communications, Madam Clerk?
We have none, but we have someone online who would like to speak.
Would you like to bring them in?
Yep.
No, they're online.
Valerie, you've been brought in.
Oh, I'm sorry. You didn't call my name. Yeah, I would say it's good to hear Bruce Toby. He and I have both shared a history in Gloucester on wastewater treatment.
Valerie Nelson.
You, you can hear me? I'm sorry, I...
Valerie, can you raise your hand if you're trying to speak?
Now...
You need to unmute yourself.
Oh, shoot. I thought that I have. You can't hear me, then.
Valerie, I can hear you. I just want to state your name and address. Maybe they can hear you when you do that.
Hear you.
Can you wait just one moment, please?
Sean, that's great you can hear me.
Definitely gonna have to.
Now, can you hear me?
Oh, hold on one second, Bill.
Thanks.
Something's frozen on my computer, so if you could turn your volume up all the way, please, Councilor Worthley.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Valerie.
Now you can hear me?
Yep.
All right, thank you so much. I absolutely support this loan authorization, both because we have no choice. EPA and DEP are telling us we have to do this. We're under a consent agreement. And also because if you don't vote tonight for the loan authorization, we would forego favorable financing under the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. Bruce Toby and I go way back on wastewater projects. I agree with everything he said. EPA let us do all these other things aside from secondary treatment. We had to do the North Gloucester project, et cetera, et cetera. And both he and I have long experiences with EPA and wastewater financing. So while I fully support this and urge you to vote for it, I do have a very serious question, though, and that is that as a resident, I know that all of us in the community are urgently wondering, what are you anticipating will be the sewer rates or property tax increases? And can the city council request of the administration a schedule of reports to you and to the public on what your plans are for what you anticipate? Is it 20 or 30 years? What do you estimate the federal and state grants will be? And most importantly, what will be the sewer rates and taxes? Will they commit to reporting to you on a regular basis so that the public is aware of that? I did hear comments at BNF, this is such a huge project, it could damage the borrowing rate across the board for the city. It could be a quadrupling of sewer rates. You know, for anything that you're concerned about, whether it's schools or climate projects as I am, or neighborhoods, I think we need to know what this huge project is gonna mean for the financial well-being of the city going forward. And the more frequently that reports and opportunities to weigh in by the public on how this is paid for, what it looks like, I, I hope that you request those kinds of reports. The consent decree requires reports on construction and compliance with the treatment plan. I'm talking about will you require of the administration, request of the administration, what the payment plan is and allow the public to weigh in on whether we think that the sewer rate or the property tax is the right way to go here and learn about what you are planning as, payment terms and estimated federal and state grants, et cetera. So I hope that there is a commitment on behalf of the administration to regular reporting to the council and to the public. But I'm in absolutely full support of this. There's no choice, and I urge you to vote for this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor or in opposition? And we had no communications, correct, Madam Clerk?
Correct.
Okay. Questions from the counselors. Remember to speak into your microphone and speak up. Where are we gonna start? Jason, Counselor Groh.
Hey, I just have two questions. The first one is, the $15 million in grants that we've already received, is that, is that going to be applied towards the $206 million project cost, or is that in addition to? Is that gone?
The $15 million that has been awarded or is in the process of being awarded is mostly covering design services as well as some of those facility improvements that recently happened in 2023, as well as things in the interim. So it will go to a combination of construction, design, both things that have been constructed to date and things that are coming in the future. So yes and no?
Okay, so we're looking at, some of that may, may have already been spent and is not applied to the overall price tag of the, the $206 million that we're looking at. Secondly, the housing choice community categorization that we have, is that impacted by the 3A and BTA zoning? I'm asking Suzanne, I guess, over here. Is that one of the grants or one of the categories that we need to be concerned about losing if we are uncompliant with 3A?
Yes. Ooh, excuse me. Yes, we, we would be...
Speak right into both of them.
Yeah, sorry.
Particularly the red one.
We would be concerned about losing our eligibility for state grants with regard to 3A, yes, if we're out of compliance with that.
Thank you. Quick follow-up question on that, just in terms of the granting. I'm assuming we're gonna be pursuing further grants from the state and federal government in terms of trying to pay for the overall cost of this...
I think the time to discuss 3A is at another...
I'm not talking about 3A now. I'm talking about grants for the program, for the actual project.
Thank you. Yes, we'll continue to, our lobbying efforts, and hopefully with your help too, with Senators Marky Warren, Congressman Moulton, as well as Rep. Ferrante and Senator Tar. And the consultants will be shaking the trees for any other grant opportunities that are out there. Thank you. And if I could just answer Valerie Nelson's concern too.
Please.
It, when, it will come to the council eventually about whether it's a debt shift or the rate, and, and I would assume that the council is gonna hold the public here and then let people just weigh in on that. So we don't know which way it's going yet. We don't know what the numbers are yet. It'll depend on how much, which size the chunks are we borrow, as we borrow them, and how much we're getting for loan forgiveness, how much we're getting from earmarks, congressionally-directed spending, and other sources. But yeah, this is not something, there's no need to keep it a secret. I'm, I'm curious, too. I have to pay the rate and pay taxes, so I'd like to know how bad it's gonna look for me, too.
If I may, I believe that CFO McCorkle said that the sewer rate would double, not quadruple, at BNF.
That was a quick back-of-the-envelope estimate.
Right.
Connor, with a head nod, is that still what we're looking at? Or is he? It just keep moving on me, sorry.
So yeah, I just wanted to make, make that it wasn't quadruple, it was double.
Right, I said quadruple at the meeting, and, and I was way off.
Oh, okay.
Thankfully.
Thank you. Counselor Benson. Counselor Mejota.
Obviously, this is an extreme amount of money. Is it possible to get a, instead of a 30-year loan, to be able to expand that? And then with the second plant, would I water be, how safe is I water now, or what are the benefits to the second plant just for those?
So it's a secondary treatment, so we could have Mike or Dana talk about the nuts and bolts of that. But basically, what the, what we're sending out after treatment to the ocean is, to the, to the bay is gonna be much, much cleaner. It's not our drinking water supply, it's, it's our wastewater supply.
Thank you.
Maybe supply is not the right way to, to say it. Yeah, we're not holding on to it. But as far as the first part of the question, Connor could answer that about the 20, 30-plus years.
I believe the standard term for the SRF is 20 years. They've offered 30 years to us, given the size of the loan, but they have said it is negotiable, so I'm sure we could negotiate it if we had to.
Okay, thank you. Those are my two questions. Mine was, Connor just did with the 30-year, and then you answered the other part with the benefits of the second plant.
Counselor Benson.
So just, I'll ask, since I'll ask you first, Mayor, is with earmarks, grants, and other monies, that 205-plus million could be, it may be quite lo, much lower, I'm not, let's knock on wood that, that, but there's the potential that this could be significantly lower, correct?
And the fact is, we're, we're not gonna go out tomorrow or even next month and borrow the full amount.
Yep.
We'll borrow what we need as we need it, and the more that comes in through grants is that much less we'll borrow in the end.
Yep. No, and I, and I think when you mentioned about earmarks, I think it's important we as counselors and even as the community at large to lobby our federal delegation on this and, and ask for more funding for this. Then I just, looking at the slides that you had, maybe the, they can, our consultants can ask, is about loan, you looked at June 30th, 2024, loan appropriation-dash-borrowing authorization deadline, that's five days away. Could you, could you just speak on that just a little more of like the cons, there's gonna be, there's consequences if we don't act on that, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, I know, I know, yeah.
So the trust funds are made public in the intended use plan usually every late winter, early spring, and that one of the first conditions of that is that you have to have local authorization to accept the funding and fund the project. So you are committed, and then they know that is your first condition of staying, maintaining your space on the line so that your project stays eligible. There, the competition for these funds right now is extremely intense, both on the drinking water and the wastewater side. So this is the first obligation you have, and then you start the loan application process, which takes proceeds over several months. So that is all in place as before construction begins, and then you are now into the new phase where you have the agreement with the trusts. They provide certain financing to get you through construction, and then finally you get to the final loan when you start paying it back at the terms that were negotiated.
Could, maybe Commissioner, could you explain it just in like layman's terms, so folks can just fully understand, like, I want, so folks understand the consequences of not doing that by the 30th, if that makes sense?
We must do this if we're gonna be in this year's funding cycle. If we do not, we have to go back the following year. If we do not start construction soon than later, we will miss our, our deadline for construction, and there are penalties for that. And so it'll cost us money more in the end. It's very important to also recognize that if we don't do this today, it's gonna cost us more tomorrow. We've seen that time and time again. We kick the can thinking we're gonna not do it, we end up doing it anyway at a much higher price. When EPA was around the same topic 13, 14 years ago, we're talking $80 million at a high level. So it's inflation, we all feel it. We go to the grocery store, we pay our cell phone bills or light bills. Inflation has climbed very quickly in the past five years, and this type of work grows exponentially quick. So we do it now, this is the best bet to get in. We have a funding opportunity in front of us, and we have opportunity to look for other funding sources to help pay this down.
Because, and I think you're, you're correct to point out, and, and maybe you can correct me, is even last year, the cost of this was lower. If I was looking at back in 2023, it was around, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, around $150 million, is that correct?
I don't have the exact dollar in front of me, but yes. Every, every, every year that we don't do this, it grows significantly.
Yeah, and just to speak to that, the, the, the costs that were submitted to get on the list were from August of 2023. So that included escalation, looking into the future, as well as contingency, so that we have, we feel secure that that is enough to fund the project. And as the design proceeds and construction proceeds, hopefully that contingency can be retired and reduced as we kind of move along. But we had to go with the most conservative number to get on the list.
No, that makes sense. So the, the sooner we act, the less cost. If we, if we, as again what you're saying, if we don't act now, the cost will go up. So I think it's very important that we act now. Thank you.
Other counselors. Counselor Gilman.
So I typically don't repeat questions that I ask in subcommittee, but the, the comment that continues to be heard, and I'd love another explanation, particularly Mike from, from you, is the location of the secondary treatment facility is in an area where there's rising seas. And I know that there's some information that I think the public should be aware of in terms of how that is protected as we make a huge investment like this. So if you could just elaborate a little bit on that. So if you could just elaborate a little bit on that, I know it's a repeat to some people that might have watched the meeting or to, but I think it's an important one.
Mike, make sure you speak into the other one too.
I don't, there's any question that the wastewater treatment plant was built on filled wetlands. Site was preloaded in the late 70s, and construction began a few years later. It was designed for primary and secondary at that time. The land to the west was secondary, was going to be sited. It was never sited at the time. And so again, the site was prepped for this 40 years ago. We have a barrier wall that surrounds the entire facility right now that was funded with an EDA, it's a federal grant, that will protect, as Eric mentioned earlier, the 2,070, 500-year flood elevation. So again, anticipating what sea level rise is going to look like is a little bit of a difficult task. I don't know if anyone knows exactly what it's going to be. But we use the best information, the best technology, the best engineering we can to protect this facility. That investment was one of the more meaningful investments we made at that facility for protecting this from the rise of sea level.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Make it quick.
Yeah, so just maybe have the solicitor chime in of the legal, the binding legal. If you could just briefly, just so folks can understand the consequence, like, there's no choice. That's really my point is, if you could explain to folks, there's no choice, we have to do it.
Exactly, we do have to do it. This is a consent decree that was entered into by, the court entered it, US District Court, entered it in May of this year. And there are certain schedules, timelines, reporting requirements contained in the consent decree. There's also stipulated penalties. If we fail to meet any of those deadlines, we can be subject to per-day violations and penalties. The federal and state government have also reserved their rights to seek additional remedies against the city if we don't comply with these reporting requirements and also the timeline. We can be subject to contempt of court, because this is the court order. We can be subjected to, they can seek injunctive relief against the city and also additional fines. So we really, the city does not have a choice in complying with this consent decree. It is an order of the court, and we are bound by that order of the court.
Thank you.
I just, I'm just a couple of, no, he's good. So you brought up page 13, which says that by December 31st of this year, we have to submit, and I guess we've already submitted a final plan. The reason this is so timely right now is because it gives us, we don't waste another year to be eligible for these significant amounts of money that will give relief to the city of Gloucester, to the residents of Gloucester. I just want to make sure everyone realizes that we are under a timeline and that this vote this evening for this, the reason it's so timely right now is to be able to get in for the state revolving loan fund to allow us to be eligible for some of those significant grants and loan forgivenesses. And 1.5% interest in today's market is very, very good. So it's quite important that we, that we move on this this evening.
And if I could just add, I mentioned the mayor's, I'm the ninth mayor since this plant was built. And as Mayor Topi pointed out, or Mike Hale pointed out, it was built for secondary treatment. So nine mayors, dozens and dozens of counselors. When I sat there as a council just a few years back, the number we were kicking around was $80 million. So fast forward to 2024, $206 million. So the time to act is now. And as I pointed out, the previous mayors had other fish to fry that made it impossible to go out and tackle the secondary treatment plant. We're lucky that the, no pun intended, the state and federal government are flush with money because of all the COVID relief money. And one thing people might be asking about is, well, where's all that infrastructure money? Build Back Better money? We are not eligible. We've tried, there's a state agency run by Quinchen Paulfrey, the sort of liaison between the state and the federal government for their, all this federal money. And we don't qualify directly, but the money has been filtered through the SRF from the feds to the state. And that's why there's a large chunk and why there's a great chance for some, a nice amount of principal forgiveness in such a low interest rate. We don't know where it'll be in a few years, but this is the time to strike while it's there.
And it's important for us to get at the head of the line.
That's correct.
Yeah. And also, you know, we talked about inflation, built into this is a 12% inflation between now and 2027 of 19, over $19 million. So, you know, that's just built right into this number, is that for inflation.
Counselor Worthley.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're mixing comments and questions together a little bit. So if we're going to do that, I might as well.
Go ahead.
If that's okay. Firstly, I understand how hard the job is, and what's in front of us is really important. And I really appreciate yours and Mayor Toby's comments about protecting our asset and really looking at it as an investment, both for economic development and for also saving future additional costs. And more importantly than all of that is protection of the water.
Yes.
And the wetlands. And that's why I think we should consider, when the time is right, the value to the entire city, maybe even Cape Ann, and look at this cost being borne by everybody and not just people who are on sewer rates. People who are on septic, there's no sewer on my street, so I'm lobbying against my own personal benefit here. But septic companies bring their septic to the wastewater treatment plant. So it's a benefit for everybody. So I do think we should be looking at spreading that burden citywide, but that's for another day. I respect the timing and the deadline, and I appreciate the penalties. I don't want to hold anything up any further. I'm just going to ask the mayor for future reference when there are other times like this. You know, if the council had a question that was worth digging into and wasn't available right now, if the public made a comment at a public hearing that was worth researching, we'd be in a position where we really couldn't answer that. And the consent decree was denied on June 30th of 2022. You signed 571 days ago to agree to this. No disrespect, and there's a lot going on, but it'd be really nice to say, if there were a question that the public or the council had to ask, that we have that flexibility to not be in the position of saying, well, I'm not going to ask this question because I don't want to lose the penalty, get a penalty for the delay. So if we could just, as hard as it is to try to respect the timeframe that we have to work within.
Sure.
To get these things done. So that wasn't meant as disrespect, but just sort of, we're sort of up against the wall, we have to do this. So it doesn't really give us the opportunity, or the public the opportunity, to be heard or to ask questions that might cause a little delay for investigative reasons. But nonetheless, I support it, I think it's long overdue. I appreciate you taking the bull by the horns and having to do this. And like you said, there's nothing fun about this.
It's not going to be an exciting ribbon cutting.
Any more questions?
Yeah.
I'm going to close the public hearing. Here's as though we've all made several comments, but if there's more comments to be made, now is our chance.
I know, that's what I said, if there's more comments to be made.
So counselors. Take the motion. Counselor Memhard, make the motion. Committee report.
The problem I had during our budget meeting last week was that I had trouble reading this number because it was such a large number.
Last Thursday at the Harbor Masters office, we had an excellent discussion and addressed many of these questions in great depth. And the resulting committee recommendation on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Gilman, Budget and Finance Standing Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council approve the loan order as follows. Ordered the $205,972,280 is appropriated for the cost of financing the WPCF Secondary Treatment Plant Construction and Facility Upgrades. All costs thereof as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws and costs incidental or related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow $205,972,280 and issue bonds or notes thereof, therefore, under Chapter 44 of the General Laws, Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws, or any other enabling authority. And that the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust in accordance with the Chapter 29(c) as amended and in connection therewith to enter into a financing agreement and/or a security agreement with the trust and otherwise to contract with the trusts and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan. The total authorized to be borrowed is pursuant to this order and shall be reduced by any grants received by the city from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or any other agency thereof on account of this project prior to the issuance of any bonds or notes. And further ordered that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under Chapter 44(a) and/or Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws. Any or all of the bonds authorized by this order provide such information and execute such documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board may require for these purposes. And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Grow. Counselor Gilman.
So I will be supporting this motion. I think it's incredibly important for our city. I think it's about time that we address this head-on. I appreciate the work that Mayor Verger and his team has done to get this out in front of us finally. And I'm also appreciative that you discussed the issues of allowing us to get reports twice a year on the status. So the progress reports that go out to our fellow agents to keep them abreast of our progress in terms of how we're adhering to the consent decree and making this work by the end of June of 2028, I think is absolutely imperative. And I'm grateful to know that you will be reporting that to us twice a year. And if council wishes at that point to get an update presentation, it will be something we'll be able to do. Because I think transparency right now on this project is really important because this is the biggest loan that the city has ever engaged in. And we need to make sure that our taxpayers understand what we're doing, how we're doing it, are we on track? And if we're not, how are we going to get back on track to meet the deadline? So I appreciate it and thank you. And I'm really grateful for the hard work of this team. And thank you.
Thank you. Other counselors? So we've had a motion made and seconded, would you like to call the roll? Please, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Memhard.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Aye.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Mejota.
Yes.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed, the motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider.
Second.
Motion to reconsider made by Counselor Grow, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion. Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Memhard.
No.
Counselor Benson.
No.
Gilman.
No.
Grace.
No.
Gross.
No.
Grow.
Nope.
Mejota.
No.
Nolan.
No.
Worthley.
No.
The vote is zero in favor, nine opposed, the motion to reconsider fails.
Counselor Memhard, would you like to read the second piece of this?
I'm sorry.
Don't we have to? No. Further order, oh, you read it both parts, okay.
I think we've accomplished this particular item of business.
Yes, we did. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing, 2024, number 18, SCP 2024, number four. Modification of SCP 2012-10 amended under SCP 2014-004. Commercial Street, number 55, MAP 1, Lot 33, GZO, Section 1.5.13. Compliance with approved plans, modification of plans for the amendment of Condition Number 24, Appendix Number 1, and Condition Number 1, Appendix 2, Parking Plan Conditions Regarding Removing the Requirement for Off-Site Parking.
Before I open the public hearing, we did get a communication from Ms. Allison. And I'd like to give you the opportunity to withdraw this at this particular moment. I'm not inclined to refer it back.
Sure, if I can just understand, Mr. Chairman, you're asking us to withdraw the application?
If you said you were going to present a totally different set of, of conditions, is what your email, your communication to us was, that you were going to present a totally separate, different set of conditions than you did at the previous Planning and Development Subcommittee meeting?
Not completely different. We are still, we would still like to go ahead with the removal of the condition. And then we would like to add a, a parking plan for employees, which is what we had understood was the, sorry, which we understood was the concern at the P&amp;D meeting. And that's why we're asking that it be sent back to the Planning and Development Committee to have further discussions.
Well, if we open the public hearing, we have a clock ticking, and I would prefer not to start that clock.
And there isn't any way to refer it back to P&amp;D without opening the hearing? Is that my understanding?
Correct. As far as I know.
May I?
Because I'll ask Grace, sorry.
Well, the public hearing has to be advertised within 65 days.
We've advertised this public hearing.
Right, I believe you could open the public hearing, refer the matter back to P&amp;D, set the date to a date certain that you'll be taking up the matter again. You do have that option. But, you know, it would be withdrawn without prejudice if you were withdrawing it. If you were planning on withdrawing it tonight, it would be withdrawing it without prejudice. If you want it continued, that's at the will of, I mean, if you want it to go back to P&amp;D, that's at the will of the council, but you should open the public hearing first.
I do understand that it's at the will of the council. And I was, as I said, hoping that we could continue this rather than have to withdraw it and begin again. And I'm happy to explain my position further if it's appropriate to do that.
Counselor Worthley.
My understanding is that we could open and continue the hearing, and then within the 65 days, that's two months, have it back to P&amp;D and back to this council in time, and it would still comply with the law on that. So that's my understanding, if I understood it correctly.
But did you get the communication also?
Didn't get it.
It had a considerable change in the order of conditions. There was-
I agree with, with the Council President. It was a considerable difference from what was originally proposed. I mean, I do have sympathy for the folks that are from, that are from the neighborhood that have been staying, staying here until 6:30, that were probably trying to talk at the, at the public hearing. But I do agree that this is significantly different than what was originally proposed.
And I think it needs to be, you know, I think when you change something that dramatically, it should be withdrawn and resubmitted.
Yep.
So I chaired that meeting at P&amp;D. And one of the things that I want to be clear about is that we asked them to go back to the drawing board and think of other winning situations, solutions. And that was part of this request. And that was part of this request. So I believe that this is just a little bit of an addition to what was initially proposed. And in the other matter is that not everyone at the table here has seen this letter. And if we're all going to make a decision as a council, minimally, I think we should be able to at least hear Attorney Ellison's letter, or at least if you could read it into the record so everyone understands what she's proposing before we make a decision unilaterally that we want them to...
We can test the waters on that and how the council feels.
Thank you. That's exactly what I was trying to say.
Councilwoman Grow.
I just ask Grace, if we do open the public hearing and continue to a date certain, our 65-day window is satisfied, correct, in terms of having, starting the public hearing? We can continue to deliberate in P&amp;D for as long as is necessary to come back? What would happen to the public hearing once whatever was resolved at Planning and Development to come back to the public hearing? Because it seems to me it would be substantially different than the advertised public hearing. How would we address the issue of fundamental change in what the public hearing is actually supposed to be about?
Well, the public hearing was advertised essentially as, in the same language as what I read. So is the, if the conditions are still to delete Condition 1 from Appendix 2 and to delete Condition Number 24 from Appendix 1?
Yes.
Then there would be no change in what was advertised. So my understanding is that the amendments would not have any impact on the legal ad. The deadline for this public hearing to be opened was July 12. If it's opened tonight, then we are within, the council is within that deadline. And it would be continued to a future date. I would suggest putting down a date that you're going to continue it to. And I don't think that it's an indefinite amount of time that it could be continued out to. But I would have to look to see what the specific time period is. But you do have some time, once it's opened.
And there would be no re-advertising. So there would be no public notice of advertised for the change of date, which is similar to other public hearings.
If I might note, Mr. Chairman, very often when you're dealing with certain projects that come before the council, there are changes as time goes on. And I don't believe that this is really a wholesale change, but it's actually what we believe is a better change. And we, as I said, we're looking forward to being able to present that to the Planning and Development Committee to more thoroughly vet that before we came back to the council.
And by withdrawing, we're not forbidding you from doing that. So I just, I find that it is a considerable difference. And it doesn't necessarily address the condition. It just gives some vague possible solutions to it, but doesn't address the condition at all. So anyway, we can have the vote to...
Councilman Nolan has his hand raised.
Councilman Nolan.
I do agree with you, Council President. I do think this is a major change. I did sit in on this meeting. We had a discussion. And it's a compromise that I don't think is going to work for the neighbors in the fort. I think that they only got one thing out of the whole beautiful Bhopur Hotel, which is wonderful. And that was the fact that they were going to offer off-site parking. And that's a condition of their special city council permit. And when they asked to do this, it was voted down. Three opposed, zero in favor. And if they want to come back and change this with anything else, I also agree that they should take a chance in withdraw it without prejudice and resubmitting it or take a chance of the consequences of a vote.
Thank you. Right, that's what I thought. So ball's in your court. Do you want to continue with public hearing?
I would say respectfully, Mr. Chairman, that I will request a withdrawal without prejudice.
Thank you. I'll... Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Worthley, seconded by Councilor Memhard. Question. Madam Clerk, call the roll. Oh, sorry. Council Worthley.
One question. A yes vote accepts the withdrawal from the applicant to amend the order of conditions?
No, to, no, to withdraw without prejudice. A yes vote is to say, yes, will allow you to accept withdrawal without prejudice.
And that means the conditions are still in force?
The condition still would be in force, yes.
Okay.
Any more questions? Call the roll, please.
Councilor Memhard.
Yes.
Benson.
Aye.
Gilman.
Yes.
Grace.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Grow.
Aye.
Marjota.
Aye.
Nolan.
Aye.
Worthley.
Aye.
The vote is nine in favor, zero opposed. The motion to withdraw the application without prejudice has passed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing, 2024, number 19, group-free petition under City Charter Section 9-1b, which requests a public hearing to request support from the mayor, Gloucester City Council, state legislature, and Congress to support a quiet zone for the Maplewood Avenue, Willow Street, and Cleveland Street crossings.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Worthley.
Thank you. Before we open this public hearing, I just want to make a disclosure. I live within a half-mile of the train station. Twenty-two years ago, I pushed to try to explore the options for a quiet zone. As we hear the applicant tonight, I just want to disclose that I did help facilitate and explain the process. If it ever comes time to revoke on funding for this, I would certainly be unbiased. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak in favor, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, can everybody hear me? So hi, thank you so much to City Council and members of the administration. My name is Carla DeLaPorta. I'm a voter, resident, homeowner of 9 Cleveland Street here in Gloucester. And the petitioners and I are grateful to have the chance to request this administration submit a notice of intent to the MBTA for a quiet zone for the Cleveland Street, Cedar Street, and Maplewood Avenue train crossings. We're not asking City Council to approve the quiet zone this evening, and we're also not asking them to fund it. So I'm going to comment this evening on our community experience with train horns, reasons we are requesting a quiet zone. I'll define what a quiet zone actually is. And I'll address a couple of top concerns. So according to the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Railroad Administration, engineers must sound the horns four times at crossings for at least 15 seconds. On weekdays, a minimum of 27 trains cross these tracks between 5:13 a.m. and 12:45 a.m., resulting in at least 108 horn blasts every weekday, allowing for 4 hours and 19 minutes of quiet. The minimum horn volume is 96 decibels. The maximum horn volume is 110 decibels, equivalent to a jackhammer. And it's worth noting, actually, recognized as the human pain threshold for noise. Horns start about a quarter of a mile away from crossings and can be heard up to two miles away. Yet, most petitioners live or work within mere feet or a tenth of a mile away from one or all three of these train crossings. Making it feel like a jackhammer is the soundtrack to our life 20 hours a day. According to the Federal Railroad Administration, train horns diminish the quality of life due to increased community noise levels and interference of common activities, such as interpersonal communications, remote or in-person, work, study, watching TV, listening to music, reading, childcare, and some peace and quiet essential for well-being and relaxation. I'll personally mention heightened anxiety in pets. And for the sake of time, I'm not delving into the effect the train horn has on our local businesses and customer interactions. Enjoyment of land use and outdoor pastimes are also curtailed because they are incompatible with these high noise levels. In fact, long-term health effects by train horns are recognized by medical experts worldwide. One very recent example, in April 2021, a study conducted for the U.S. Rail Industry Safety and Standard Board concluded rail noise is associated with sleep disturbances, which can lead to cardiovascular disease, depression, obesity, accidents from fatigue, lost productivity, and a decline in thinking, understanding, memory, and decision-making. The Federal Railroad Administration allows for quiet zones to mitigate these impacts. Let's be clear, a quiet zone does not mean no train horns. In quiet zones, the engineer has the authority to use the horn as often and as loudly as needed. Horns will still be used in all potentially dangerous situations and comply with other railroad operating rules. Quiet zone simply means lifting the mandated four horn blasts at certain consecutive crossings. A more accurate definition of a quiet zone is reduced train horn area. Of course, safety and cost are two important concerns. As far as safety, hopefully, the clarification of what a quiet zone is assuages concern and makes it clear the horn can and still be used. Yet, it is worth noting, a federal ongoing study since 2014 found deaths do not rise when quiet zones are created. A September 2020 Federal Railroad Administration report concluded there was no statistically significant difference in the number of trespass casualties following the establishment of quiet zones. Safety is also enhanced by train and no trespassing signage, crossing gates that go down an average of 30 seconds before crossing, warning bells with flashing lights, and recently painted pavement markings that extend 15 feet on either side of the train tracks, and four, four-feet-high white reflective poles also on either side of the tracks. Yet, we do remain concerned about pedestrians on the tracks, many of whom are vulnerable members of our community and experiencing homelessness and/or struggling with the disease of addiction. Since 2017, myself and the Cleveland Street Committee have worked with the previous mayoral administration, MBTA, MBTA law enforcement, Keolis, state police, Gloucester Police, and state representatives to deter pedestrian traffic. And it has dramatically decreased. We continue to notify GPD, MBTA, and Keolis of pedestrian traffic flow. And suicide prevention signage and Narcan boxes have been installed next to these crossings thanks to our partners from Samaritans, Inc. and One Stop Harm Reduction Center. We'll also partner with Operation Lifesaver. They're a national nonprofit committed to preventing collisions, injuries, and fatalities around railroad tracks through public education. But establishing a quiet zone requires even more safety upgrades, potentially including warning, time train detection, circuitry, gates with channelization, and four quadrant gates, for example. We are not asking the city to fund these upgrades. The goal is for the funds to come from federal or state grant money, American Rescue Plan Act funds, or federal infrastructure bill money, not the city budget. We're also not asking City Council to approve a quiet zone this evening. We're simply requesting that the council and the administration submit a notice of intent to the MBTA to consider a quiet zone at the specified crossings. This will help us determine necessary upgrades and costs, allowing the community and our officials to make an informed decision together. One of the purposes of this council is to promote the health and quality of life of Gloucester inhabitants. Establishing a quiet zone will forward that part of your mission. So as you can tell, I've been trying really hard to advocate with logical points. But the truth is, I am often exhausted, irritated, and this constant train horn, it's just sucking the life out of me. So we're asking for your help. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. If you would like to leave that statement with the city clerk, it can be...
...the studies that I referenced in here,
...of the studies that I referenced in here, and I'll leave it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor?
Hi. Oh, hi. Oops. Hi, my name is Louis Wagner. Um, I live with Geraldine Lewis right over there. And we live right by the railroad tracks. And that keeps my little, my, my partner...
Give us your address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Seven Arthur Street, Unit Eight or Apartment Eight, Gloucester.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Um, okay, anyway, um, I live with my partner over there. Um, and we walk the dog and we, we live right there, and it keeps us awake at night, wakes Jerry up. It, I realize there's safety concerns, but as Carla said, tooting the horn doesn't make that much difference. And, um, I've been talking to our neighbors, and they have all kinds of suggestions, but we're all tired. We're all exhausted, and we're burning out, as Carla is, right by the railroad tracks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor?
Hello, good evening. My name is Iliau Korea. I live at 25 Willow Street here in Gloucester. I've been here for two years. I love the city, very adorable. Um, I'm in between Cedar Street and Willow Street and Cleveland Street. I have a five-years-old son, and I'm worried about how the train horn will affect his life. Uh, he's gonna start school now in September, and it does bother my sleeping, so I don't think there's any study. Uh, I seen him shaking when that, uh, train horn blows. I haven't been able to record it because not all the time. And sometimes some of the engineers, they don't blow, um, the horn as loud as other ones. And, uh, the train comes by sometimes at 3:00 AM, 2:00 AM. So it's not from 5:00 to 12:00 or 2:00 AM. Sometimes I, I think maintenance or something like that, like a couple of weeks ago, uh, they came by very early, uh, late on Saturday, like 2:00 AM on Saturday, and 5:00 in the morning on Sunday. So after working all day, I'm a painter, working outside, exhausted, get home, like tonight, I'm very tired working outside, I won't be able to sleep until after 1:00 AM. So please consider, um, this issue for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Lawson, and I live on 33 Maplewood Ave. And as I can see, there are some other gentlemen and women who are from my condo. The video I have on my phone is from a Wednesday night at 2:00 AM. For a solid minute, I hear nothing but train horns. 2:00 AM. The trains are supposed to have already been stopped by then. Be it a delay in North Station, I understand, but to be woken out of a dead sleep, my child trying to go to school the next morning, being woken out of his bed, and now taking another hour to get him back to sleep is unnecessary. Before we moved in, we lived on Warner Street. We could hear everything coming from the train station. Everything. Now granted, I did move closer, I understand that. I understood that the train was going to be there, and when the trains shut down for safety maintenance, it was never the way it is now. I understand safety. I understand that it needs to happen to keep people safe, and the studies show, quiet zone or not, people are going to be on the tracks whether they're supposed to be there or not. But we need to keep the kids in all of our sound minds so that we can keep on going with our day. So I really consider this a wonderful idea to have a quiet zone. And I know that there is at least one council member that I've spoken to at Veteran Services about this matter, along with my husband. So please, consider putting that motion into place to help our kids and help our families. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor?
Hi there. Barnaby Prendergast, 61 Fernholz Street. Um, speaking in favor, I support the quiet zone. When we first came to America 20 years ago, or almost 20 years ago, I had a group of friends here, and we used to go to the NASCAR race in Michigan every summer, whole group of us on a bus, great fun, lots of pranks. One year, we took a train horn, and, uh, we set it off, and the police came and took it off us because it was too loud for NASCAR. So if it's too loud for NASCAR, there's a fairly good chance it's going to be unpleasant for the people who live nearby. Thank you.
Thank you. Step right up. Name and address for the record. Name and address for the record. Yep. Speak right into both microphones, please.
I'm Bob Gutman, 33 Maplewood Avenue. Um, if you'll excuse me, my remarks may be a little bit scattered. I haven't prepared a statement. Jeff Worley will remember this. Um, I came here, I don't think it was 22 years ago, I think 30, more like 30 years ago. I don't regret that. But I, I was astounded and laughing at the same time. I could not believe, quite frankly, the ignorance of this city in allowing Maplewood Avenue and Cedar and Willow to have no gates at all. No gates. Just a loud train horn, train horn. I said, okay, I mean, some of us move to places like this because we see value, and we know we're gonna have to fix it up. That was the kind, that's, those are the kind of people speaking here today. And it's gonna, and it's gonna be more like us, because the MBTA, with, with, this is that new zone where you have to have higher density. It's not gonna get any easier for city council if this problem is ignored. So I'm laughing, and I think this is a no-brainer. I'm gonna move in, and we're gonna get it fixed. I don't remember exactly what hap, who said what, but getting the gates was no problem at all. Everybody else had gates. The implicit assumption, and it was a good assumption at that time, was that if you get the gates, you get a quiet zone. It didn't happen. It couldn't have been easier at that time, because we could have been grandfathered under the existing rules, which are much harder and more expensive under the federal rules. But the city councillor at that time, who will go unnamed, actively opposed it. I mean, I'm, that's an understatement, meaning this. This, this was the same city councillor under which we had no gates, and all of a sudden, the horn was necessary for safety. Okay? And ever since then, I mean, I can't go through all of it. You, you could, you couldn't, until now, you couldn't get the energy together to have a hearing of this nature. This is the vanguard. This is the opportunity. You're not, you're probably not gonna have another opportunity like this, because these are the people that you can talk to and deal with, and they know what, know the history, and they understand enough about the city to work with you. It's not gonna get any easier than this. The, the effects of the, uh, noise at that time were well-known. Sleep, sleep and cardiac. But the problem is that as anybody who's worked with that and knows, you can't say that somebody got a heart attack because of the train noise. You can't say that somebody got sleep apnea because of the train noise. Well, I was conditioned as a marathoner, I, I, I was a marathoner.
Bob, 20 seconds.
What? 20 seconds. I've got both now. I've got sleep apnea, and I, nine, nine weeks ago, I had open-heart surgery. The effects are subtle. Lot of people think you get used to it. You can't get used to it. It's, it's impossible. And there, and there's a lot, that's the lie.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Speak in favor.
Richard Brandl, 46 and a half, Warner Street. Uh, I have a neighbor, you know, uh, it's a family, and, uh, they were, uh, they were near the, uh, tracks, and the conductor was going by, and, uh, they had their dog with them, which gets very anxious, you know, has high anxiety, yes, young, young dog. And, uh, and the train, you know, is blowing the horn, and so they, so the, uh, the wife, uh, put, put her hands over the ears of the dog. And what does the conductor do? He's staring out the train, and he's just laying on the horn. Just laying on the horn, laughing. They could see him laughing going by. You know, the train, a train is a dinosaur. I don't know why they still have the, the diesel train. I don't know why they don't electrify, and, uh, it'd be a lot better on the, uh, tracks. You know, there'd be less maintenance and everything. It'd be a lot safer than having this big Goliath thing going down the, uh, track, the, uh, tracks, which is outdated. It's not hauling freight, it's hauling people. Uh, that's, that's about it. And it, it does bother me too. I'm at 46 and a half Warner Street, and it bothers me too. And I can't, I can't believe people can put up with that. So, you know, with that, you're like, oh, it's ridiculous. So, you know, that are closer to the track. Uh, thank you. Yep.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to speak in favor? Anybody with their hands raised, um, online?
No.
Anyone to speak in opposition? Hey, um, does, do we have any communications?
No communications outside of the, um, petition that initiated all of this, and I just want to say that there were a number of signatures that were submitted, and 235 of those were certified as residents of the city signing this petition.
Thank you. Far exceeds the amount necessary. Do we have any questions for Carla, who made the presentation, city councillor? You would like to come back up? Yeah, you need to be at the microphone. We'd like you to come back.
First off, thank you for your presentation. Very thorough. Um, I want to answer a couple of quick questions very quickly.
Close to the microphones.
Sure. Better.
So, th- this has been going on for decades now. Um, the, the first question, of course, and I'm, I have to admit my ignorance on this, on this topic. Why hasn't it happened? What does it take to make it happen? Uh, what is the cost concerns that have been raised? I, I know that people have said it's gonna, you know, cost a lot of money. And I guess that the final question I would ask is, do you know whether or not Manchester by the Sea or Beverly Farms have quiet zones?
So that's a bunch of questions, and I'll do my best to answer them to the best of my ability and knowledge, which, mind you, is probably limited. A lot of this will, um, a lot of the answers to your questions will unfold, hopefully in the investigatory stage, which my understanding is the purpose, one of the purposes behind the letter of intent. So, um, first of all, the process is an arduous and expensive one. I do know anecdotally that attempts such as this have been made decades ago. I think it falls short because it is arduous and potentially expensive, and I think that first of all, there is a ton of miscommunication about what a quiet zone actually is, and I think people get deterred because it's a big hill to climb, because my understanding is getting a quiet zone is literally an act of Congress. So the very first step, there's two or three steps, actually, one sec, I have them written down.
And ask her if she has this information.
A few administrative steps even before getting to the, what we're requesting, which is the notice of intent. So for example, um, let's see. Our city would have to determine which crossings will need to be included. We'd have to identify any private highways involved. And I know sometimes that's complicated. I know that goes on, on the tracks on Cleveland Street if there is a public safety issue. There's a lot of hot potato. This is city property, this is state property, this is, so determining that, um, identifying pedestrian crossings. And then finally, there is an administrative step of updating, and that, this might be in the packet I gave you, but of updating something referred to as the U.S. Department of Transportation Crossing Inventory Form. So these steps are all what's needed to be done before a, a letter of intent is sent from the public administration to the MBTA. In the packet that I handed in is actually a copy of, of a booklet that provides the steps regarding how to request a quiet zone. Um, I don't, I, I, as I said, I don't know, I'm not super familiar with the history of this, other than that it has been attempted before and didn't go very far. Um, I, I also think that one of the things that has caused this surge, um, and why maybe people weren't vocal about it before, I don't know, I haven't found out about this, but I, my guess is that something changed, because I've been at that same property since 2010, and prior to the two years of the train, year and a half, to two years of the train not going by because, um, there was repair on the tracks, prior to that, I don't know if anybody else can speak better to this, the train was really challenging, but it has become unbearable. So I think first of all, that's just a matter of perception. I think going without it for a year and a half and two years, and then having to live with it again, has just been unbearable. But I, I suspect, my guess is, there has been some clamping down on this federal mandate of the four horn crossing. Now, I can't speak intelligently about how other communities have successfully gotten quiet zones. I have attempted to, have gotten, not gotten very far. A lot of them, such as the one on Washington Street in our community, has been grandfathered in for a very long time, and my understanding is unfortunately, all of the other locations that have succeeded with quiet zone have had different processes along the way. You know, there are certain standards and certain bureaucratic steps that everybody has to take, but everybody sort of has had their own process. And I'm sorry, sir, I don't know if there are other questions that I may not have answered. Yeah. Any other questions?
I had a little more answers to Council Gross's questions, if allowed.
Certainly. Thank you. And again, thank you for all the people who have spoken tonight. I think being exhausted as you are and still advocating, um, is really noble and appreciated. Um, so Council Gross, you'd ask, as Carla said, it is an act of Congress. There is a councillor here who, uh, who actually got an act of Congress approved. I think Council President Gross, you've done that. Um, yeah, let me just, if I could. Um, last year, I spoke with MBTA Oversight Board, and they directed me to Congressman Seth Moulton's office, and that's where we got the outline of how to do this. I will share that with everybody after this, tomorrow, I'll send the email that just outlines the process.
Carla supplied it to Grace, so Grace can disseminate that to us.
Okay. Great. Um, so, um... You'd ask the question about the cost. There are some standards that the act, uh, the Congress will require to allow for a quiet zone, and some of it is gates, some of it's lights, some of it's bells, some of it's painting. And honestly, this council worked really hard last year in advocating for some train safety issues, and some of those upgrades that they already invested in would count towards what's necessary to qualify for a quiet zone. It's not all-encompassing, but it would be a requirement to fund those things. Now, I think what Carla has said is, is we're not looking to, we're not firing teachers and closing fire stations to fund this. It's a request to find out what it would cost, and that would then create an opportunity for us to know we're actually saying yes to, or we'll be saying no to. So I think this point, uh, well, I'm sorry...
Tonight, we're not saying yes or no to anything.
Not tonight, no. But that would be, once we get the information, we would know what we're talking about.
Which is, well, there is, there is no answer for the cost.
Not yet.
Right.
Thank you. And to some of the questions that I, I, I understand Beverly has five quiet zones, and just to clarify, it is not an act of Congress. It would be the, the city putting an application in, and then the Federal Railroad Administration would approve it. So it wouldn't be Congress literally approving it, it would be the Federal Railroad Administration approving it, just so we understand that. Um, my question...
You're gonna have to investigate that a little bit further.
Because that is, that is, that is, I've studied this quite extensively, but I will say like this is, and we can have that conversation, but that is...
But that's great, because we...
Yeah, that is my understanding, like, looking at other cities and towns across the com, across the country, uh, looking at actually just now a primer from, oh, in your Oregon, and they're going, who approves the quiet zone? And it says the federal, and I knew, understood, and I was doing this, um, before the meeting, and looking at like, who actually approves this? And looking at documents from the, from the Federal Railroad Administration, it is that. And then I just popped up this primer, and then was looking at some general law as well.
And just to clarify, it is not an act of Congress. It would be the city putting an application in and then the Federal Railroad Administration would approve it. So it wouldn't be Congress literally approving it. It would be the Federal Railroad Administration approving it, just so we understand that. My question...
You're going to have to investigate that a little bit further.
Because that is, that is, that is, I've studied this quite extensively, but I will say like, this is, and we can have that conversation, but that is...
That's great, because we...
Yeah, that is my understanding, like, looking at other cities and towns across the country. Looking at actually just now, a primer from, in Oregon, and they're going, who approves the quiet zone? And it says the federal. And I knew, understood, and I was doing this before the meeting and looking at like, who actually approves this? And looking at documents from the Federal Railroad Administration, it is that. And then I just popped up this primer and then was looking at some general law as well. So my question just for you is, I appreciate all of, first off, appreciate everything that you've put into this. And for a full disclosure, I live over on Summit Street. So I can, I hear the horn even living up on a hill. So I just want to say that. And I've heard from some people in this room, full disclosure as well, about their concerns with the horn. I think in the meantime, I think it would be imperative to maybe look towards calling on the administration, as they've done in the past, to try to see if they will have the MBTA not pull on the, push on the horn. So if I'm saying it correctly, so much maybe that we can get that in the meantime before we move, if we were to move forward on that. My question for you is, have you also looked at, you've looked at other, have you looked at other communities in the surrounding area of how they've done this? If that makes sense?
Very preliminarily.
Okay. Okay.
But I will say, if there is any room for myself, petitioners, or community members, to participate in any way with providing the council or the administration with further information, and if there's any way that we can participate that would be helpful, I'm certainly on board to do that. And I can't speak for anyone else, but I am quite certain that we would have people willing to volunteer their time to do anything we can to make this process, if possible, as easy as possible and not administratively heavy for our council.
Sure, and...
Questions, this is questions.
Yeah, no, this is a question. My question also, almost, I lost my question, is it? But anyhow, so, but my question example is, so you've talked about safety. And could you clarify, like, if someone is in the tracks, if a quiet zone was enacted, that does not prevent the conductor from blowing the horn? Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. The only thing that a quiet zone, my understanding, what a quiet zone would do, and you will even see all of the language in what I was speaking to you all and everybody here this evening, is pulled directly from the Federal Railroad Administration. And they specify that more accurate language of a quiet zone is reduced train horn area. Nobody has the authority, certainly not anybody outside the Federal Railroad Administration, to request or take away the authority of the engineer to blow the horn as often and as loudly as that person sees fit. It will always remain with the engineer's discretion. The only thing a quiet zone does is lift the mandated for horn rule. That's it.
Thank you. Any more questions? I'm going to close the public hearing. And I'm just going to, I just want to make a comment before everyone. I will, I will be in discussions with the administration. Oh, Counselor Nolan.
Two things. I did look into this eight years ago in aspects of a quiet zone on Stanwood Avenue. And I'd also like to make an amendment that we add Stanwood Ave. To this list, which would close out all of our train crossings in Gloucester in total. Washington Street's already a quiet zone. When we did look into it on Stanwood Ave before, we went through the state, the MBTA, and the federal level of the trains. It's not a problem of getting a quiet zone. They usually have no problems allowing that. It's payment. And it's, we're responsible for paying for each cross. And there's upgrades for sight and visually impaired and stuff like that. And at the time, when we looked at Stanwood Avenue, it was almost 800 grand for that crossing. And it wasn't in the cards with the administration to spend that money. But I do think that, you know, into respect of the horns, there's a little bit of overzealous going on. It's been louder since the crossing instigation. But I just would like to make an amendment or ask, I don't know if we have to make an amendment or not, if we could add Stanwood Ave to that. If it's just an ask because it's not really a voted-upon thing? Or do we need to vote to make an amendment to add Stanwood Ave?
I don't believe we need to do, there's no action required. We can, we can put Stanwood Ave into the discussion. I just wanted to make a comment, first off, that I will be in discussions shortly with the administration to try to figure out our best course of action to keep this, your work, moving forward. And I think it's imperative that you be involved. There's way too much knowledge to not be involved in that. So we will be in touch, absolutely, on to see how we can move forward on getting some of the answers that we need to have. Counselor Worthley.
Yes, my last comment is, first, thank you again for all the attendees and all the work that was done. What I would hope is that we can't vote on anything that comes before us the first time it appears. But maybe in a subsequent meeting in two to four weeks, we have a council resolution, maybe jointly signed by the administration, to work towards this. And then obviously, that would be the time to include Stanwood Ave as well, as Counselor Nolan mentioned. So I think that would be the potential action item for us to get us started, to find out a letter of intent, to figure out what it would cost to do this. And that will become forthcoming.
Thank you. Counselor Gro.
Do we need a resolution or can a council, can the council just put a council order into the administration and begin the process?
A letter, though. If you want a letter from the council, it'd be something we vote on.
Yeah, I understand the process. I'm just saying that we don't necessarily...
It can be done either way.
Like, I don't think we have to wait two weeks or a month to put it into council order to get the process done.
Well, like I said, I was going to, I was going to have a conversation with the administration.
And I'm looking forward to, yeah, that would be great.
Yep.
Let me just say what clearly, I think it's awesome that you wanted to have a conversation with the administration. I just think we should, as a body, take some action, but we can't take action the first time something appears before us. So I'm just saying, at some point in the next meeting, there'll be something before us and we can discuss it then. And if we want to join forces with the administration to show our support for finding out what this would cost, I think that's an action we should take, but we'll decide that as a council.
Counselor Memmard.
Just, I'd like to step back for a moment. Again, thank you and your neighborhoods for the work you've done on this. But this does fall directly under the City of Gloucester's city council responsibilities. I think it's Article 3 in our city charter defines noise as an issue that affects people's livelihood and well-being. And it is in the purview, as I encountered when we had a discussion about use of handheld gasoline-powered leaf blowers, which don't come close to the noise that the trains make. But it is pertinent to our responsibilities as councillors to address and assist, you know, the fact that it falls under all these federal train regulations complicates it greatly, obviously. But it does directly fall within the charter and our responsibilities in terms of a quiet zone for quality of life for our citizens.
If you could forward that section of the charter along to the city clerk, then that would be very helpful. We have no action to take on this, other than to follow up through you. Is your contact, the city clerk has all your contact information. So, thank you. Your passion has not fallen on deaf ears.
Have a good night's sleep.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Counselor's request to the mayor.
Go through the rolls. So Counselor... Counselor Memmard? Counselor Memmard, do you have any requests?
I have no requests tonight. Thank you very much.
And then we have Counselor... Counselor Benson.
No requests at this time.
Counselor Gilman.
No requests at this time.
Counselor Grace.
No requests at this time.
Counselor Gro.
Nothing for me.
I have my homework, so, next, Counselor Majota. No question, no. Counselor Nolan.
Buena fiesta.
Buena fiesta. Margarita, sabor, tutti mute. Counselor Worthley.
I've spitted my requests in writing already to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. So, that done, I'll entertain... Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Gro, seconded by Counselor Majota. Roll call, vote please, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Memmard.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes, go Team U.S.
Gilman.
Yes.
Grace.
Yes.
Gross.
Yes.
Gro.
Please.
Majota.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes, have a great night, everybody.
Worthley.
Yes.
There we go.
All right, the motion to adjourn passes, nine in favor, zero opposed at 9:31.